Calip City Council of August 11, 2025. Noting the absence of Mayor Barnes, and prior to roll call, I'd ask for motion to appoint Alderman Tracy Smith as temporary chair for tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
So, motion was by Carlson and second by Larson. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Thank you. And a lock call roll. Zazada?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Carlson?
Here.
Powell?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Seven aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Um, pledge allegiance, please, everybody.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make the excuse, sir, I'll talk to you tomorrow. With that, I would take a motion for the approval of the agenda as noted.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, oh, boy. You know, approval by Andre and a second by Alderman Zazada. Boy, it's been a long day, you guys.
It's Monday.
Hi, my friend. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Zazada?
Next will be presentations. We have none.
Yes.
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 Sorry.
I know. See, it's not only me today.
It's fine. It's a rough Monday.
All operation. It's a Monday.
And I didn't even notice.
You guys are sure about this, right? No presentations tonight. Public participation, I have one, it will be for Nancy, but she wants to speak later on. Thank you, Nancy. With that, appointments, we have none. And next is consent agenda. Take a motion or approve the consent agenda as follows. Number one, minutes of the TIF III Joint Review Board meeting of April 25, 2025. Number two, minutes of the TIF IV Joint Review Board meeting of April 25, 2025. Number three, minutes of the regular city council meeting of July 28, 2025. Number four, accounts payable and payroll through August 11, 2025, in the amount of Number five, investment and bank summary, balance summary through June of 2025. And number six, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through June 20 of 25. And seven, crime-free housing bureau report, July 2025. Again, I take a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, second by Alderman Zazada. Roll call.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven aye.
Thank you, sir. With that, we have no public hearings on the agenda tonight. Number aye, no considerations for tonight. So we'll move on to item J, resolutions. Resolution number one, resolution 2025-078, authorizing a TIF economic incentive for Heartland Bank located at 205 South Fourth Street, Decalb.
City manager.
Thank you. Two council meetings ago, there was an item on your agenda that was a special use permit relating to the relocation of the Heartland Bank, neighborhood bank, from South Fourth Street to the intersection at Grove and South Fourth. And that was approved. The general contractor involved currently in the project, which has begun, had estimated the cost of the overall project at just under $1.7 million. The bank has applied for some assistance with utility extensions to the site under the city's downtown TIF program. TIF eligible tasks would include, in this case, no new construction above the ground, but it would include demolition, which is not relevant here because the previous building was demolished before. Replacement of older underground infrastructure such as water, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer mains. Also, some soft costs such as architectural and engineering expenses. However, in looking at the formula that was created back four or five years ago after the forensic audit and after we had some lengthy conversations, both with our Joint Review Board and with the council, is this on, by the way? Are you hearing me okay?
Yeah.
About how we would calculate fair grant allocations going forward. We tied, just as happens in other places, very conservatively, we tied future grants to what the projected growth in EAV would be, which is to say the projected growth in property tax for the city only, not the aggregate tax, what was going to come to us since we were the ones who were giving that out. And we usually use very conservative measures with some plug percentage for potential EAV growth over time. In this case, and in the background, you may have seen a spreadsheet that was further conservative and not changing the city's tax rate. And as I looked at that 20-year projection, we came in just a few dollars under $83,000 over 20 years that would be generated for the city alone in the way of property taxes at this site. So as the bids were made available to me, I saw that that's about all that could be put into the project. That would be sanitary, water, and storm. I had a chance to see, they were just starting to identify and locate the access points. And it's a mess. As you might imagine, this is part of the original town, which grew up right at that intersection, just slightly north of that intersection. There's a lot of old underground there that may or may not be alive. And then there's, for almost every water line, there's a duplicate water line, and for every sanitary sewer line, there's a duplicate. And then there's also the frontage on South Fourth Street. So it looks like every bit of what was estimated and probably more would go into those three types of utility upgrades. And so I feel comfortable in recommending to you that amount of $83,000, which is in your background, and ties back to the projection on property tax to the city.
Counsel? Excuse me, counsel?
Oh, by the way, I brought this to the Joint Review Board, which meant two weeks ago. We anticipated that they only meet every quarter. We could have had a special meeting, but it wouldn't have been possible to get it together before much work was done, they want to perceive of the project. So we had a good conversation about consensus was that JRB was in favor of this.
Thank you. Again, counsel, any comments inside? Alderman Zazada?
Um, I'm excited about this project. I think that, you know, this is exactly what TIF is intended for, because this project, this property has been needing to be changed for a long time. My only hesitation is just that I'm trying to, sorry, and I'm being very straightforward and transparent here, but I'm trying to perceive the return on investment if we're, you know, if we're not getting back the tax dollars because we put that in. So, I mean, obviously, we're talking it's going to improve the corner, it's going to improve the space, it'll bring it back to use, and it begins to shift that corridor. So I'm just, I would like to spend a little less than $83,000, but it seems like a good investment.
City manager.
Toward that, fair question. Toward that end, one of the things we do, sometimes there's a direct benefit to the city. In this case, it would be the property tax, but what we're saying is you're taking that over a period of time from the city. But the other taxing bodies gain additional property tax. Now, the kind of argument to that is, well, what about the building on South Fourth Street now? Well, that's under contract, or it has been sold. I think it is lined up to go toward residential use. There are residential uses on the second floor. And the first floor, because of its lack of exposure to South Fourth Street, will probably be converted into apartments. So I see probably the valuation of that building increasing, which helps us too. I can't at this point say what that dollar amount will be, but... So there's some trade-offs in these things, and I think in this case, we're, one of our jobs is either, sometimes it's direct benefit to us, but sometimes it's just direct benefit in a way of economic development in the city.
Alderman Larson?
Alderwoman Larson.
I will say that the first person that kind of goes into an area that needs to have some love and attention and some growth in this century, I think I'm okay giving a little bit more because they've come forward, and you might think, oh, just a drive-through bank is like not going to be it. But to have that as a finished new corner and across the street, we have the great apartments, condos there that Mr. Pappas has built, that starts just rolling that momentum ball. So while, yes, it would be lovely if it was less money from us, I think it's worth it to invest in that.
Anyone else? Alderman Verbic?
Yeah, and certainly appreciate the commitment to Decalb for many years with Heartland Bank and ongoing business and doing business in Decalb, appreciate that. I'm looking more larger picture, and yes, no, $83,000 is a fair amount of money, but also what could be other more impactful projects? Not to dismiss this project at all, but in other words, looking at the total scope of the downtown or the TIF district, do we have other things that we need to talk about perhaps that we would save for? For example, what are those projects? I hear ideas mulling about all the time for what could be needed downtown and how we could best make use of our TIF money. So I, for one, appreciate their business, but I don't think I'm ready to invest $83,000 in this when we really even had, not had a discussion about, well, what else is needed in that TIF district with those dollars? And/or what could we save for on a larger-scale project in the future?
Thank you. City manager.
Just Alderman Larson.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Indeed, you have like a spitball to throw at me. And I hear what Alderman Verbic is saying, but, you know, it's kind of like, what's the old saying, a bird in the hand is worth two in the bush? And it's like, we have somebody investing here. They're in the process of doing it. And so I don't want to be frivolous with our money, but I also, to wait around, and if the TIF doesn't encourage anybody else to pick South Fourth Street, then we've lost out on maybe anything else.
City manager.
So, I thought about doing a long discussion of the upcoming TIF budget discussion that the council's going to participate in. But it, here's what I will tell you. So two things have happened. The building that was there was public property for 70 years or so. And that means that the site, any private reinvestment in the site is going to generate, it's considered a pure TIF site, because it's all that money. There's not some money going over here, and then some of this is going into TIF fund. It's all going into the TIF fund, every penny that's generated in the property tax. So that's a good thing. And across the street, the old city hall was 65 years, 70 years, so that's a pure earner too. So the combination of those two, one's got a head start on the other by a couple of years, will make a difference. And actually, the old city hall site, the city hall suites now, it's called, has made an enormous difference in your TIF III fund. And so I do have some suggestions for the council to mull over when we get to that. And it's probably going to be, it's not going to be next week, because we, when you see the agenda, you know, we have plenty to talk about in a short period of time. Although, at that point, I could come prepared to tell you a little bit about the money that's going to be there available for big projects. We'll have, we'll have over a million dollars by the end of this year in that fund, irrespective of this, that in the next year or two, as other monies come in, and at a greater pace than some of the smaller lots that are in the downtown that had been always private, you'll see some possibilities, just as I have. And we just haven't had a chance to engage in that, but it's an absolutely important question, what Alderman Verbic asked, which is, so what else is out there? What's possible? And some of what I would propose, and we won't go into it right now, is there's some areas for more private redevelopment, some areas for public services that in the downtown area, we've talked a lot about in the past. That's a teaser, I didn't mean it to be a teaser, I didn't plan to bring it up.
Alderman.
Behind you. Go for it. I just wanted to make sure again, for the sanitary, the water, the storm, and that, it would have to be removed, the existing, regardless who comes in.
Yes.
And I remember I worked on the parking lot across the street, and we put in the light bases of what was under there from the original Decalb. So getting that out of there is a pretty big deal, no matter what.
Well, I can tell you, there was a, there was the original fiber line, which is encased in concrete, which nobody knew was there until Walker uncovered it this morning. And then, as they were trying to get to the storm manhole, the nearest storm manhole, they also discovered a three-inch live gas main that nobody had marked. And just off of that is an inch and a half inch gas main, and then there's, there are two water lines in there that we're not sure whether they're dead or live yet. This is just from today's excavation. And I should have taken a picture and brought it, I didn't know we'd pursue this to this extent. But they're going to make sense out of what goes past that corner, which is just one more aid to future redevelopment somewhere.
Alderman Zazada?
I think I'm prepared to support this. I just needed to talk about it a little bit and see where we're at. I like that the other building is going to be repurposed, that's exciting. However, I guess the question then is, are they going to want? I don't want to ask this question, but other people always ask this question, is, are they going to want TIF dollars for revitalizing the old building into apartments?
I think, you know, our focus has not been exclusively, obviously, on, it's, if we're like just right across the street, we put money into what later became apartments, but we also put money into the demolition of a building that was a sick building, and something needed to be done, and we got TIF, we got dollars out of that in exchange for the TIF. So I haven't been approached, is it possible? But ultimately, that's your decision, and it would make a first stop at the Joint Review Board and then go to the council, so we'd get an idea of, you know, we have higher priorities down there. We have the Britannia site, we have the road right of way, we have private redevelopment on both sides, east and west side of Fourth going south, a lot of it for commercial purposes. The council made it pretty clear when we did that TIF IV plan, that commercial was a key priority, so...
Alderman Smith.
Alderman Verbic? Thank you.
Sure. If we were looking at a $1.6 million project here anyway, wouldn't we look at these costs and pick those up regardless, as, in other words, to try to incentivize this building or this business to locate here? Wouldn't, couldn't these be costs that we work with the sanitary district or whatnot to waive these as an incentive to them versus using our TIF money? Is that possible?
No.
Okay.
No. Do you want me to elaborate on that?
Please, a little bit.
Just a little bit. The sanitary district doesn't have a program for incentivizing this kind of thing by simply just putting money into running a new sanitary line along the frontage. In fact, that, you know, sanitary district, unlike the city, has only one or two sources of revenue, and the extension of sanitary lines, big or small, to serve a new site are typically considered the responsibility of the developer or the business owner. And I attend their meetings, I think that's fair to say.
Thank you.
Alderman Walker?
They pretty much answered it, but I got it. So basically, so basically, at the end of the day, whether it's the bank or another, you know, business coming in, we, I guess, they'll ask for the same, you know, since all this stuff needs to be done. So it's like, we might as well, well, I think we might as well just, you know, maybe deal with it now, because at the end of the day, we have to make it attractive anyways, whether we do it now or later anyways. If that's basically what you're saying.
Yeah, and there are some, it's not just this corner site that is being helped by this. They're working on a manhole there that serves multiple properties. The storm line that comes through there is downstream from other properties that are generating stormwater that otherwise would be a problem there, and so forth. So it's a mini, little minor neighborhood redevelopment project, even though it's centered on one lot. Fixing the utilities, which is why we invest in that, makes sense for a little broader area.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Is my math right? This, they're asking, or say they're asking, say we give them $83,000, that's only 4.9% of the total project price. And I will note, for the council's awareness, we've done up to 30% of project costs in TIF dollars in the past.
Alderman Walker?
I'm good.
Okay. A couple things. I seem to remember, maybe you can help out, when the condos went in, he ran into some problems with the, those particular lines underground as they got demo, digging it out and demo.
He did, but he also, they also anticipated doing a lot of work, because we, there was a line right down the middle of that lot where the old alley used to be, so that had to be relocated, they had to bring water in from over on the, like behind Gordon Hardware and that area, and new hydrants, and the storm water was a bigger problem, too. I remember decades of having parking lots full of water, so, yeah, and that's where our money went, and the demolition of the old city hall, so that was it. That was what it was.
So, thank you. Anybody else?
I'm good.
Alderman Carlson?
No, I'm good.
You're good.
We need a roll call, Mr.?
I think you can get a motion first.
Yeah, I need a motion. Oh, city clerk, I'm going to yell at him. I need a motion. I better read the whole thing since we're this far along. Motion for resolution 2025-078, authorizing a TIF economic incentive for Heartland Bank located at 205 South Fourth Street. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman, Alderwoman Zazada, second by Alderman Powell. Roll call, please. We're having a hard time with that, aren't we?
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven aye.
Thank you, sir. Moving on, resolution number two, I'll take a motion for resolution 2025-079, authorizing a Fund 400 non-TIF architectural improvement economic incentive for Buridaville located at 1026 West Hillcrest Drive in amount of $17,459.42.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Zazada, second by Alderman Carlson. City manager?
Thank you. And there may be some people in the audience that aren't familiar with this quote, non-TIF AIP program. I'll just explain that we know, we were just talking about a TIF incentive for Heartland Bank, although that's not a AIP grant, which has a limit of $25,000. We had a conversation here at the council level a couple of years ago when we were putting together the 23 budget, and we knew that there were, most of the town is outside of TIF III at that point, and TIF IV was to become TIF IV, and there were a lot of small, maybe four or five shop, older commercial strip centers that were pretty tired, 40, 50 years old, needing some help. People were coming to us, we didn't have a program. So we decided, let's just, this will be limited, but let's help them do maybe some new signings, get some new people coming in, and usually, the buildings didn't have a good accessible front door or a bathroom, or... So we put some money into the, to a fund, which came to about 70 grand a year. It's not a lot, it's in our Fund 400, but it's been a very popular program. Every year, we spend all of that. This is the first grant after Big O's, it was on two different council meetings, we have, we've had now two takers here. This one, like Big O's, is, it's an older strip center, and, but Buridaville Restaurant has been owned by the Galvins for many, for decades. They have been giving it a facelift and asked if there was some assistance. They needed some help with three different things. One was roofing, one was some electrical, mechanical, and plumbing repairs, and some was for the signings. Now, each of those falls in a different category. I broke it down for you in a very tight summary on page three of your background, but the combination of the three, the percentage of this, percentage of that, came to $17,459.42. We think it's a good use for the fund, and we recommend your support.
City council?
You're on.
I'm super excited to be able to support this right after the Big O's project as well. This is in my ward, I think one of the only restaurant, perhaps, in my ward, and so I'm super excited that we're going to be making these changes, especially because there had been talks of, and I don't even want to bring it up, but a TIF in that area. And so I'm very thrilled to see that we found another solution without going to TIF, but we're leveraging this AIP to solve all the problems right there, and that's fantastic, and I think it'll be transformative, absolutely.
Anyone else? I agree, they've been there forever.
When did it open?
When did they open?
You were the first customer.
Eighties or nineties.
That was sixty.
You and I should have.
Yeah, I was saying.
But they've been around a very big stake in that area, so, and this still leaves us a lot of money left to the fund, right? Without anything else coming forward.
We haven't had for a couple more before the year is out, and here it is midway through August, so, you know, that's not bad at this point.
Good. Alderman Walker?
Hey, and they're like one of the longest-running businesses in the area as a whole.
Yes, it is.
Like all of our generations have been in there.
More than once. I guess with that, roll call.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Moving on, resolution number three, resolution 2025-080, authorizing a bar liquor license with supplemental gaming for Hades T.O.P.L.L.C., doing business as Jazzy's Spot, 870 West Lincoln Highway. Take a motion. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Verbic, second by Alderman Walker. City manager?
So this business is of interest to a former manager of Jazzy's. Is it Tanya? Is that Tanya Easley, who's in the audience? And you may ask her questions if you like. It is, as you know, it's liquor licenses and gaming licenses aren't just handed from private party to private party whenever there's a change, even if it's someone, as in this case, who's got great experience and... great experience and, uh, done a good job as a manager, uh, it has to come to you, you have to prove that, and there's background checks and so forth, so that's what's before you tonight, uh, because it's later in the year, uh, we've also asked for a, a break on the, in terms of the renewal fees for, for, uh, these licenses and, um, recommend your approval.
City council? Alderman Walker?
Hey, I think this is a great thing, so, you know, one of the reasons why, you know, I wanted to be, uh, an alderman is because I work for UPS, and some people don't know I'm an alderman, but this establishment has always been top notch, and I don't know when I go to sleep after, you know, ten o'clock, what goes on, but every time I go deliver there, which is every day, they're very courteous, there's never no riffraff there, and it's just good to see businesses like this be able to prosper, so I'm proud of you and congratulations, hopefully.
Uh, anyone else? No throwing spitballs, uh, roll call then, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven I.
Thank you, sir. Moving on, uh, K, uh, ordinances for second reading, we have none, and L, ordinances for first reading, number one, ord, I take a motion for ordinance two zero two five dash zero three five, amending chapter six, streets, alleys and sidewalks, section six point two zero, arbicultural, arbicultural specifications and standards of practice for trees and shrubs on public and private property, motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman, Alderwoman Zazada, second by Alderman Carlson, city manager?
Thank you, uh, you recall that, uh, it was back in November that we announced that our public works department and the city as a whole was awarded, uh, just a little over two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, a very substantial grant by Morton Arboretum, Chicago Region Trees Initiative, and this grant was designed to do a number of things, it was to improve, uh, the canopy in various cities that would qualify for this, and as it has already in our, our community, uh, we went, uh, through a process of getting bids to, uh, remove dead trees, to plant new trees in their place, uh, that was back in May, uh, and that work has been going on, uh, to, to complete our obligations under the grant, uh, another thing that we needed to do was to amend our municipal code to the, uh, extent where it regulates trees, um, we've had something, it's pretty archaic now in terms of its language, uh, known as a, a tree ordinance, it's in our chapter six of the municipal code, the specific changes are identified in your background, uh, there's some general language, uh, explaining the value of trees and improving the quality of life, addressing climate change and so forth, there are, uh, more, more strict, uh, directives for the care of newly planted trees in our right of way, uh, there is, uh, an encouragement to, to remove invasive species that, uh, can be harmful to the trees, uh, and, uh, then there are a number of species of, of certain types of trees that are recommended for planting under utility lines or, or over underground utility lines, and, uh, those are in your attached ordinance tonight, and concurrent with, with all that, what we're hoping to do, uh, when, um, Arbor Day comes around in the last Friday in April next year is to become finally again a tree city, which has been an aspiration, it's in our sustainability plan that the council approved back in twenty-four, and, uh, I, I think that's, that this is one of the last bricks in that road, and, uh, we recommend your approval.
Council?
Love it.
Alderman Larson, you did that on purpose.
Well, uh, I, I am the, the council's liaison with the environmental commission, and they're very excited about this because it finally gets all of the expert advice, all saying the same story, cause there was things that it'd be like, well, no, we do it this way, and then, well, no, you can't do it that way, and so now this actually all meets the criteria, it passes everything, so it'll be great to have like one working handbook that, so we're very excited.
I concur. Anyone else? Yeah, good job, uh, Scott, good job, sir. Um, I take a roll call then, sir.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven I.
I would take, uh, entertain a motion for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, moved by Alderman, Alderwoman Zazada, second by Alderman Powell, our, roll call please.
Larson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven I.
Thank you, sir. And moving on, uh, ordinance two zero, take a motion on ordinance two zero two five dash zero three six, amending chapter sixty-four, smoking regulations, section six, four dash one six, tobacco smoking sales, use and licensing, to increase fines for the sale of tobacco products to minors, increase the fees for tobacco license applications, and establish fines for the untimely submission of a renewal application, I take a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, second by Alderman Walker, city manager?
Thank you, uh, back in, uh, late June, the council discussed, uh, the regulation of hemp derived THC products in the city of DeKalb and, um, and, and took some action at that time, during the course of that conversation, there was also some conversation about where, uh, these products had been sold, and they were being sold in tobacco stores, uh, licensed retail tobacco stores and other, other stores that sold tobacco. Alderman Walker inquired at that time about the relative cost of fines for illegal sales of tobacco, uh, whether they were over the counter or, or, or not, and, uh, so I asked Assistant City Manager Bob Radel to do some research on tobacco fines in our region, uh, to see how we stack up, and he worked with City Attorney Matt Rose in that research, uh, and what's before you tonight are some suggestions for increasing certain types of fines, uh, and fees, uh, I, I should note, we're, we're above the midpoint in terms of what, uh, we had already on the books, but, uh, I think the, the intent here, uh, from the council and from Alderman Walker was to, to make people pause, uh, before, uh, whether they are selling to minors or what they are doing, and, so, uh, what you see here is a, a full plate of some revisions, and happy to answer any questions you may have, and your, your direction is welcome.
City council? Alderman Walker?
Hey, first of all, I wanted to thank you guys for working hard on this, you know, I've been going a little bit back and forth with Assistant City Manager, so the only, okay, so the only thing that I would say I have a slight problem with, but it's not a big deal, and, um, Mr. Radel, you know, explained it to me, but it's just the, I understand that we raised the, on the, for the business owner, or the property owner, whatever, we, we, um, we raised it, you know, a, a significant amount, you know, but, I'm just kinda like this, one thousand is a lot for one fifty, but it is so easy, huh, in any job in the world, just to ask somebody, can I see your ID, and to check it the right way, so, I, I guess, you know, I understand a thousand dollar fine, but, I mean, I, is there a reason why it can't be higher? Because I just, I just don't understand, you know, like, I understand if we have to jump through a lot of hoops because they can't ask somebody for an ID, but, I mean, cause I just think that that would make more, you know, bosses or owners more cognizant that, you know, cognizant that this is a huge problem that we're having, so I just don't understand why we just don't nip it in the bud from the beginning, because, like I say, all they have to do is say, hey, can I see your ID, and, like, going to the nightclub, like, you know, when I was younger, they'd just run it through there, it's either a real ID or it's not, so I just don't understand why we just can't, from the beginning, just nip it up.
Just two quick thoughts, it, it's your decision, uh, you as a council, collectively, to, uh, where you want to land, and, and then the other piece is that, ultimately, that a, an infraction can be appealed through our administrative hearing process, and, and we don't know at this point, you know, we, we raised fines and, uh, for, um, on the, on the crime-free housing side, very substantially, um, more substantially than this, and they have been upheld on, on the occasions, but I don't know about, uh, whether the same approach should be taken for tobacco and maybe...
And I will say that the, the fine amount is within the council's discretion, but for cases, the, there are other sanctions, uh, that can be had, like license suspension and revocation of the license, and, uh, I agree a hundred percent that all you have to do is check a license, and in the cases of the licensee, uh, the business owner that doesn't have that universal policy, we seek to, uh, have a higher form of a sanction, it, it will be a fine in addition to a suspension or revocation, uh, and, uh, so that, those are other tools in the toolkit, uh, so to speak, but if you wanna set the fine higher, you, you definitely can, it's not just fines is what, what we're saying.
So we, and along those lines, we have a process already in the code for, uh, review of the license, whether it's in, in, in the, uh, line of a possible suspension or revocation for a period of time or, or removal, so it would be for, um, the staff to, uh, bring that forward, uh, we, we'd have to, um, no, initiate that in addition to fines probably at the same time.
Alderman's.
We haven't done, I have to say, we haven't done that, on, on tobacco.
I was just gonna say, there are a couple potential points of failure there, you know, like, if, if you've got the cashier selling and the ca, and the business owner has already told them, hey, you're not allowed to do this, that, that's what I'm thinking, like, it's just, it starts to get to be pretty high.
Alderman Powell?
I'd like to see a little bit more weight on the cashier, cause I mean, you may have a good business owner, the cashier just isn't doing their job.
Correct, good, good idea.
You know, you find a business, a thousand dollars, and only the person that did it, three hundred.
Um, well, anybody else behind you?
You saw what we did with, uh, on the three hundred, uh, so you're, you're making fifteen to twenty dollars an hour maybe, and, so that's three days' work, it's not a small fine.
Right, and as far as licensing go, maybe you can help out here, if they don't pay the fine, we can suspend their license, correct?
Yes.
And you don't wanna get the, get to an excessive fine because all that'll do is just get it tossed, if I'm correct.
Depending, I mean, we haven't, we, we, we can do this before the administrative hearing judge, or the city manager can do this, the city manager has a responsibility for issuing licenses of that sort.
I, I think, personally, I think this is a good way to get, I mean, if one business owner has to shell out a thousand dollars, I think that might get their attention really fast, I mean, what do you think?
If they don't make money, if they do or if they don't.
Yeah.
So, I, I could say that.
Go ahead.
For the city attorney, so, uh, can you elaborate a little bit more on, um, just how it goes, so, for an example, let's say someone, a cashier sells, you know, products and sell it, now, how are they, how are they able to pay, so for an example, can they quit, say, oh, okay, I'm not paying that, so I'm gonna quit, or does it somehow, does the city somehow track down them, or how does that go?
Yeah, well, generally what happens is, is the cashier is cited, uh, for, uh, the illegal sale, uh, then we see that, we review that, we will cite the business owner, and then depending on, uh, the, uh, the policies that are in place by the business owner, uh, there will be, uh, and the policies in place have to be ones that prevent the illegal sale of tobacco, uh, you could always have, you know, as, as was being discussed up here, a, a quote-unquote rogue employee, right, uh, and if the business owner has a robust preventative policy, did everything that they could do but for, you know, this one incident, uh, then we are not seeking to, you know, come and revoke their license, right, uh, you know, we, we come and, and, and say there's either, you know, it's a fine or, or suspension, or, or a combination of both, right, uh, but if there isn't that policy in place, uh, and there aren't those robust measures, then we, you know, we escalate what we, what we try to get from them, uh, did that answer your question?
A hundred percent.
I'm fine with, you know, what if you guys wanna go within this direction, I'll support that, this is pretty good, but, you know, I just, I like making statements.
Right, agree, how many violations we have, I, I was trying to look it up the last time, do you remember, it was?
Smoking?
Yeah.
Or, there's, I mean, so, every year they do two sting operations, and it's, it's announced, so it's not like it's a surprise, uh, and every year, there's, there's always a good chunk, you know, Ruth can speak probably more to the actual numbers, but we get out of those stings and they go to every single, you know, business for the most part, uh, and, uh, we get probably close to anywhere between six to, to fifteen, uh, you know, the second go around, it's, it's usually less, which is a good sign, right?
No, no.
Uh, and, and very rarely do we get repeat offenders, uh, which is, which is good, but I, I, I mean, that's my recollection, uh, I think Ruth would probably, you, she's nodding in agreement, uh, with me, so.
Okay, thank you. Um, unless there's anything else, anybody? Uh, roll call then, sir.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven I.
I would take a motion for waive second reading and approval.
So moved.
Second.
Um, motion by Alderman Powell, second by Alderman Walker, any additional discussion? Uh, city manager?
Acting mayor, yeah.
Sir, making mistakes and...
Uh, so, I, I can see that there's a lot of council interest in this, so how about if toward the end of the year, we let you know, we'll probably have another sting between now and then, let's see where we are, and then we can bring this back, and if you feel it's, it continues to be a problem.
And I'm sure that we'll reach out to most of our license holders and let them know, hey?
We will.
Knock on, be a little careful, uh, with that, there's nothing...
No, we don't want them to see us coming.
We want them to change their behaviors, is what we want.
No, we want, no, we want the, no, 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 we don't wanna do that.
No, I mean, just let the ordinances change, is what I'm saying, I, we really want just compliance, a hundred percent, so.
I want it done, yeah.
We're all good. Uh, with that, roll calls please, sir.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven I.
Thank you, sir. Uh, moving on, before I call the next one, I have a speaker request forum, uh, Nancy, if you wanna come up, and I know you know this three minutes, but we'll just make it...
It won't take that long, it's very short.
Thank you, Nancy.
Okay, my name's Nancy Doherty and I live on Fisk Avenue, prior to moving back to DeKalb in twenty twenty-one, I lived in an apartment on Glidden Avenue from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand and three, and Glidden Avenue is off Taylor Street, I shopped at the Eagle Grocery Store, Lehan's Pharmacy, and probably stopped in at the White Hen seven eleven from time to time, I'm sure many of you have fond memories of this area like I do, now we know Harland Bank is moving to Grove Street, vacant be, vacant buildings need to be revised and repurposed if possible, and the goal should be to serve the area residents, although this area has a terrific restaurant with French toast pancake house, and many wonderful auto repair businesses, having a gas station with a convenience store at this location, using the current building would be a benefit to everyone in this area, it is also my understanding that there might have been a gas station at this corner a long time ago, so I'm very supportive of using this buil, building for a convenience store and having a gas station at this location, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Uh, with that, I'll take a motion for ordinance two zero two five dash zero three seven, approving the rezoning of property located eight oh two to eight ten South Fourth Street from the G C, General Commercial District to the P D C, Planned Development Commercial District, to accommodate a gas station and convenience store Amaco, Amaco Hosen, and hopefully I'm saying that correct, um, motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Carlson, second by Alderman, Alderwoman Larson, Carlson, Larson, you guys are listening, city manager, I give up tonight, no offense, it's been a long day.
No, you're doing great.
Um, first I should say, we have some guests in the audience tonight that, uh, might be able to answer any questions you may have, Matt Kukios, Kukios, Bear Warner, Russ, uh, opposing of the D B G team, David Uran, uh, Game Plan Solutions, Bo... team, David Urein, Game Plan Solutions. All three have gotten together and are supporting the council's approval of this particular ordinance tonight. So the applicant, who's represented by the DVG team, submitted this petition a while ago. There's been back and forth with the city staff. It's a, as Nancy said, it's a lot that is limited in square footage. It's a little less than the two acres we, we typically have for a planned development. It was one of the reasons there was some extensive discussion at the Planning and Zoning Commission level. But they have creatively sought to, bleeding, never mind. They have creatively sought to work with us to, to recreate actually a, as Nancy was saying, a, a amenity for the South Taylor Corridor, which was there, we found out right after this agenda was mailed to you back in the 50s and 60s. It was an Amaco station and had a, thank you, it had a wash bay. Can you imagine that? A place to wash a car in the City of DeKalb. And a mechanic's bay, and then the building which had a place to go in and be waited on, but also some, some treats in there and so forth. So they, they plan to do something a little more elaborate. The site, as Nancy said earlier, used to have a white hand pantry. There is parking there. The parking, as you could see in the background, well, here we have a rendering. And as you can see in the background here, has been creatively located both in the back of the building, which would be the east side, also on the north side. And that, together with the, the pumps on the west side, the actual underground tanks on the north corner of, of the site, fits everything in. And we appreciate the collaboration and cooperation of the petitioners tonight. The Planning and Zoning Commission, as I said, reviewed this at some length, and they have recommended to you by a vote of four to one, approval of this. And we recommend your support for their, their request.
City Council? Alderman Carlson?
I've talked to quite a few people about this in the last two weeks. And of course, with the school being a backyard to this, no alcohol, no, they would like no cannabis, or, you know, what we were talking about, and tobacco. Now, we just voted on the fines, so maybe that'll, you know, curb that. But the gas station would be great from everyone I talk to, but they have those concerns. Because the school is your backyard.
Thank you. Alderwoman Zazada?
Just in regard to that, I think we don't allow gas stations to sell and the, to sell alcohol in DeKalb, pretty much. And then the cannabis too, we have boundaries on the distance that the cannabis has to be from a school too.
Correct. Anyone, Alderman Walker?
Hey, I guess we got to listen to a lady that comes to all the meetings and has so much information. I respect that. You know, I know, I'm being honest. I respect people that actually look into things and do their homework and come and tell us what we need to hear sometimes. So I appreciate you.
Anyone else? With that, roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven eye.
With that, I would take a second, motion for second reading to waive second reading and approve. My cue cards here.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Zazada, second by Alderman Powell. Roll call, or if there's no further discussion, roll call, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven eye.
Thank you. And congratulations, gentlemen. Wait to, look forward to it. Thank you very much.
Welcome to the fourth ward.
Where are we at? I think that's it. I think we're on to reports and communications. Anybody want to bow here to go first? Alderman Verbic, thank you, sir.
Thank you to the hundreds that attended 50 Men Who Cook Saturday evening to raise thousands for Casa. Quite an event, quite an effort by all the, the men that cooked, and a lot of terrific recipes that now we want to try.
Thank you. Alderman Walker?
Yeah, I would like to definitely send a heartfelt thank you to the Crime Free Housing Team. I don't know if you guys are a team that was led by Mr. Assistant City Manager Bob Riddell. The thing is, you know, I'm on the, my boots are on the floor, and I get to see all the things that they do. And, and I would probably say I'm on him a lot. And he definitely always follows through, and he always gets the job done. That being said, I think, you know, property owners and managers need to understand that we're not going to let you treat tenants any way you want, period, no matter who they are. I mean, it's going to be a, you know, we're going to put a stop to it whether you like it or not. And I think we have, you know, the good team to do it. So I want to say, I appreciate all the hard work you do behind the scenes. And don't get in my way anymore, I'm going to run you over.
Alderman Powell?
No report.
Thank you, sir. Alderwoman Zazada?
I just want to note that if we took, did a, created a picture of everything that we did today, it's a lot of transformative stuff, and that is super exciting. And I'm just honored to be a part of it.
Alderman, you want to go? Larson?
I just want to say that I was excited to be at the grand opening or the open house for the new elementary school. And the great class sizes they're going to have, and, and just all the stuff that they have for those kids, and to meet Dr. Mitchell. I was kind of like, I see he's probably some dead guy. You know, that's who, that's who we named things after. And then I was like, oh, my God, that was, that was just so cool. And this interactive, that the kids will be able to, to just keep up and follow with, with the groundwork he's, he's left and in his personal life about how great education is. Very cool day.
Agreed. Alderman Carlson?
Yeah, I'm sorry I missed that. I was out of state, and I'm trying to get used to this with my new job or the job I've had in being Alderman. And it's working. People are calling me, and I can call them back. I've, I've had a lot of calls from people just wanting to know the rules of, like, trees growing over on the other side of the street. And that, it's great explaining it, going over to their house. And, and I get to meet a lot of people that way, and really talk to them. The other thing was, not a lot of people notice this, but you might notice downtown, it's more brighter. And I want to commend the city for having the foresight for that. A lot of times, I, I've worked traffic signal and street lighting construction for half of my life. Dealing with the state, what you have to go through on a state route, you're all going to notice this. And I'm nosy. I, I can't take myself out of the job. Your employees did it absolutely perfect, state spec, everything looks great, the levels of the foundation, I even get to that. So I want to commend all of them too. It's a great job, and you're all going to notice this. And it's very nice that you guys thought of that before it even came to fruition. So good job.
I think I got everyone. I just have two things. Third Ward, lead pipe removal, they've been moving like gangbusters. Every street I turn down, they're blocking it, which is disruptive, but a really positive thing. I really have to say that the neighbors have been very appreciative. And the street works, everybody, the comments on the streets have been phenomenal. So again, thank you for that. And one more thing, yes, Alderman Verbic, I missed 50 Men Who Can Cook this year. As you know, I go, this was a bad year for me, but heard it was very good. Thank you. With that, I would, City Manager?
Thank you.
I didn't forget about you.
Along the lines of what you were saying, we're doing about four to five, sometimes six of those a day, those lead service removals and the reinstallation of copper piping. So that's, you're right, it's going, it's going well. They've hit a stride now, taking care to take note of whatever's happening on that site that day. Try to be courteous to people in surrounding properties, but also, of course, to the principal property owner who's getting the service. And we did put in six new historic light poles downtown. Glad, glad you noticed. And we'll all notice more as, as the days get shorter. And the downtown lighting now has all uniform energy-saving bulbs in it too, lamps. Finally, next Monday, just a reminder, we have a joint city council and finance advisory committee meeting. There's a loaded agenda. We go through the usual things. But I'm going to challenge all of us to look hard at how we're spending in certain areas and what we're going to need to spend, particularly the capital area in the coming years.
Thank you. Unless there's anything else, I would take, we don't have executive session, so I would take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Zazada, second by Alderman Powell. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Nay, same side. We are adjourned. Thank you all.
All right.